I'd like to call to order the regular Westmont Village Board meeting of July 7, 2016, at 6:00 PM. Ask Clerk Simmsky for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo is absent tonight. Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Attorney Zimmerman.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening, and Jenny probably will not say, "Don't watch us and go outside because it is raining right now for the first night of the Taste." We'll open form. We do not have any requests. It's an opportunity for anybody to address the board any item that's not on the agenda. Seeing none, I will close open form and move on to reports. And I'm going to, my first report, it's always a pleasure to do this as mayor, is swearing in a new sergeant to our police department, or not new, one of our own has been promoted to sergeant. So if I could ask Chief, if you can come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently, we had the opportunity to have a candidate selection for position of sergeant, and with the State or Two Fire Police Commissioners, Chairman Robert Cavanda and Commissioner Vince Musial, who offered us a candidate for promotion to sergeant. And so probably for the last time in his career, I'd like to call Officer Tim Radke to the podium and join me with the mayor to take your new position.
All right. If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Timothy C. Radke.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The laws of DuPage County.
The laws of DuPage County.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties for a sergeant of the Westmont Police Department.
The duties for a sergeant of the Westmont Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I get to shake hands with.
Yes, Sergeant.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, don't go far. Stay there. Now I'd like to call up Tim's boss, Megan, along with Brian and Nora. And it's a history in both the police and fire service that the badges be pinned on the officer, and his wife will do the honors. If you draw blood, we have medics here, so don't worry.
Okay.
Does he have other family members that like to take a picture up here while they're here?
Tim has his mother and father-in-law, Jim, and Lynn Cusack here as well.
Why don't you come up and take a picture?
Thank you. Also, a tradition, I always, Tim has been, as all the officers, a very valued member of the police department. I got to work closely with Tim when he was in the Investigations Division, and his investigative work was outstanding. His patrol work is just as investigation. He's an outstanding officer, and I couldn't be prouder that he has reached this milestone in his career. I can tell you that he will give you his heart and soul. I will apologize to his family for the time that he's never at home. However, you've got to make that up to them. But it's, Tim gives us all to the department and to our residents, and I couldn't be prouder. So I'd like to have Sergeant Tim Radke just give a few words.
Thank you. Mayor, trustees, I can't tell you I am honored to be an employee of this village, which I love and care for deeply. And as the chief said, you will have my heart and my dedication as I continue my career with the Village of Westmont. Chief, Deputy Chiefs, Gunther, Brenza, I appreciate all the opportunities that I've received in about my 18 years here with the village. I truly thank you for those opportunities. The Westmont Fire and Police Commission, I appreciate all the hard work that you guys do. The amount of hours that you guys put in is incredible. See you guys there all the time, and we appreciate that, truly. I'd like to thank my family, my beautiful wife, Megan, my daughter Nora and Ben, my mother-in-law and father-in-law, thank you. I appreciate everything that you do to help us out with. The officers of the Westmont Police Department, I thank you all for being here. Truly, there are no finer group of officers than we have here within the Village of Westmont, and it's an honor to work alongside each and every one of you. I thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I also would like to echo Tim's comments, and also joining us is Secretary and Commissioner Joe Hearn-Sarek. All three commissioners are here, and I'd like to echo Tim's comments. We see them working tirelessly. They provide candidates, they do the hiring for our officers, and the work that they do is outstanding. And I'd just like to give them a round of applause as well, too. With that, afterwards, we have the other tradition of cake and coffee in the other room, so please come and join us after the board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving on, I have a couple other items. I'd like to call Larry Forsberg up to the podium. We had the opportunity this morning to attend a concluding program of a special class that was held in the community over the summer. Now allow Larry to comment on that.
Yesterday, we had a StarTalk. It's a language immersion program, and this particular program was focused on Chinese. This came through us through our relationship with the Taiwanese Cultural Center, and with a lot of help from the School District 201, Kevin Carey, our superintendent, they were able to launch this program this year. This is a program that was a federal initiative, and they're focused on providing language instruction and cultural instruction to students in critical languages. A lot of students tend to take Spanish and French, some of the Romance languages, but not enough students are out there pursuing the truly global languages. So we had 20 students that graduated today, and it was just absolutely amazing to watch their enthusiasm, to see how they learned about the culture, and how enthusiastic they were to share that with us today. So very impressive. I know from talking with Superintendent Carey, they're hoping to bring this program back next year. The parents who spoke today were very proud and privileged that Westmont was willing to host that program. So again, another step forward with our relationship with our good friends from Taiwan, and a great program with 201 that helps support our community. So it was wonderful.
And Larry, while you're there, to piggyback on that, we're in the process of setting up the Sister City Committee, and at the Taste this year, we'll have two Taiwanese food booths, and if you want to comment on that real quick.
So not only will we have a Taste of Westmont there, but we'll, as we always say, when we talk about our dining experiences in Westmont, you can literally dine around the world right here within our village boundaries. So we will have two booths there. One's going to be Angela, who's going to be focused on providing a variety of Taiwanese delicacies, so you get a chance to sample those, and those will be with our food booths in the parking lot. And then we have Mei Li, who will be doing bubble tea, and that will be out on Cass Avenue, actually right next to the lemon shake-up booth. So both of those are very highly engaged folks in our community. Mei Li just did the Family Fun Fest in May, which raised $3,000, which went to scholarships for Westmont students. So they're doing a lot of great things. So they're raising funds that are basically being reinvested in our relationship in Westmont. So we greatly appreciate what they're doing.
Thank you, Larry.
Be sure to stop out and visit them.
Yes, thank you. And then my last item, aside from saying, "Visit the Taste this weekend," is that, recap on the Fourth of July. The Fourth of July was a tremendous event all day long up at Tai Warner Park. It takes a whole community to provide fireworks and the entertainment that we've done now for 16 years, and I'd like to thank all those who volunteered and gave up a holiday day to serve and to provide, I believe, close to 15,000 people with probably the best show in DuPage County, especially, you know, our EMA, firemen, police department, the park district, the staff. It takes everybody to put together that event, and we had, Glenn was volunteering for the sound. So again, from my standpoint, it was a great community event run by the entire community. So I'd just like to take the time to thank everyone. Moving on, I'll ask the clerk if she has anything she'd like to.
Just to go on with what you said, it was by far the most amazing fireworks show this year I've ever seen. I even had people from other communities say they could see it from their community, and it was so much better than what their community was doing. So it was fabulous. It's like you said, the volunteers, the people that show up, what a show. If they didn't have a good time, there was something wrong with them, because it was wonderful. And that's basically all I have.
Attorney Zimmerman.
I will not be present for the next board meeting on the 21st, I believe it is. Emery Prez will be here at my place. Other than that, nothing to report.
Thank you.
He's prettier, anyway.
Manager May.
I had nothing, sir. Thank you.
All right, trustees, we'll go with Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. Of course, just first off, again, just to reiterate, thanks to everybody. The fireworks show was awesome. The whole day was a lot of fun. It's a really good thing to have right in your hometown, and not a lot of towns do it. So it's neat to see so many people come, not just from Westmont, but from other communities, and take advantage of it. So just wanted to thank that, but also wanted to thank, too, the Westmont Special Events, the Street Fair, and of course, now the Taste of Westmont. The Street Fair is also a lot of fun, another great opportunity to get out there, you meet some of your neighbors, and make some new friends, and have some good food. It really is neat to see. So it was a lot of fun out there last week, and really enjoyed ourselves. And I'd also like to call up Robert Ratcliffe, who wants to talk about the burn camp fundraiser.
Thank you, Trustee Nero, Mayor, trustees. Thank you for having me tonight. Just to recap off the mayor, Fourth of July, I was one of the bike medics, and trust me, 15,000, I think it was a lot more, because we couldn't pedal anywhere. You know, we had to wait two minutes just to cross an area, so. But it was a good event overall. Lot of teamwork with the Fire Department and the Police Department. There was some emergencies that we had there, and quick response time. Even our Deputy Chief Riley was there. He was cruising in the golf cart that was built for the zombie apocalypse. I kept making fun of him about that, so. But other than that, it was a great time overall. Oh, come on. Still better in the socks. Anyways, I'm here to talk about the kids' burn camp, and also a waiver of permit fee that I'll get to in a second. With me being here, this is the second annual Kids' Burn Camp charity event, so obviously last year, it was a good showing turnout, and we wanted to do it again this year. This year, it'll be held on Saturday, August 6th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We kind of moved the time back a little bit to get more people there for more food sales. I was talking with Trustee Addington. We think that would be better to get more people in the park earlier, sell more food for the profit. It's a joint effort between the Westmont Fire Department, Westmont Lions Club, and also the student body group, AAMN, through Chamberlain College of Nursing, which I'm still there. And as the benefit, the Kids' Burn Camp IME, that's through the Illinois Fire Safety Alliance. It's a great organization, helps kids that have been burned to be with other kids that have suffered injuries as well, so they see that they're not different than anyone else. There's other kids like them, and they camp and they fish, and it's a great charity overall to be part of. Like I said, Lions Club, they're going to be helping out with the food, which was huge last year, so it'll be a bigger help this year. Some of the things that we have going on there, Thomas the Tank Train Ride, huge hit last year. We have that coming back this year. We're going to have a jumpy house, a fire truck slide. We're also going to have a face painter and some balloon artists as well. I just submitted the payment for that to occur through the school. We'll also have live music by the band Portrait of Sound, which is a band founded by Richie Sazada, who is also a member of the Westmont Fire Department. They'll be playing there as well. And then, as far as other things, we'll be there, we also have a raffle. I know Ty Warner already donated, I think, like nine big beanie babies. Windy City Thunderbolts, they donated a family four-pack already. I'm talking to King County Cougars right now about them donating, and then I'm going to be hitting the local businesses. I know Humidor last year, they want to help out again as well. I did talk to Phil Zalaski, who is the Executive Director of the Illinois Fire Safety Alliance that oversees the safety burn camp. He will be coming out as long as with other members as well to this event. I did email him a flyer, which I have copies here, if you guys would like to, I've got four of them, if you guys would like to pass them around. He will be putting it up on the IFSA website, so not only will the camp be out there, but also Westmont Fire Department's name's going to get out there, Westmont Lions Club as well. So it's good publicity for everyone involved. Excuse me. As far as promoting it, we're going to have flyers. I already talked with Larry. We're going to put it on the board. I'm going to get ahold of the Westmont Progress again. Also, we're going to be at the Fire Truck Night and passing out flyers there, so it'll be hopefully a good turnout for that. And then also, for the permits that are needed, we're going to need a sound permit for the band, and also a raffle permit as well. So I stand before you humbly, asking if the fee for those permits could be waived for this event, and if you guys have any questions, I will be glad to answer them.
Tim, the only thing you need for your raffle is just to come on and fill something out. There's no charge.
Okay.
So if you just come in and fill it out, it's good for a year, you can use it over and over.
Okay. And then I think we needed a sound permit as well for the band.
You do need a sound.
And I would strongly encourage you, and through Chief, to attend our Rotary Club, and I'm sure they would love to see this and probably be willing to help if, right, Chief? I'm sure if we brought it to the club, we'd be interested in something.
Yes, be a great presentation.
I just want to add one thing. Robert failed to tell you that last year, the first year that he did this, they raised $2,000 to donate to the burn camp. That covered two children that were burned during the year to go to that camp. It's $1,000 per kid for the whole week to go to that camp. So their fundraiser supplied money to send two burned children to that camp for a week. So that's significant, so.
Thank you, Chief.
And bring some posters in, so we can put them up in the village, too, for you.
I do know, Phil, he's sending me a bunch of pins and posters and stuff like that. It'll be coming soon, so.
I could say, compared to last year, your presentation, you sound like you could be a professional at this now.
We, there were some things to work on. We did tighten it up. It was kind of spaced out, you know, everywhere. We kind of have it more compacted, pretty much going to be located in the, like, south parking lot, and that Steve over at the Park District, he gave us from the soccer fields all the way to the tennis courts. He's already reserved. There's no soccer games, there's nothing, that's all for us. So, and plus, we have the pavilion where the band will be set up and playing, so.
Very good.
And the Lions Club is very much involved with this. Unfortunately, people, especially kids, who get burned suffer eye damage. And so this is a service project for us. The Lions don't make anything on this. This is strictly, we'll be there, we'll cook, we'll take care of all that side of it. Any money that's made goes directly to them.
Nice. Good. Thank you.
So procedurally, this has to go on the next village board agenda, because the board will need to vote on the permit and any fee waiver that might be associated with that, but that'll give you plenty of time before the August 6th event, because I think the next board meeting's the 21st of July.
Okay, thank you. That could be, if it's treated like a special event permit, it could be a consent agenda.
Yeah.
Good.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Robert.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Trustee Barker.
Two things this evening, thank you. The first one is the Community Development Committee meeting will be August 4th, and the highlight of that meeting will be talking about updating the permit fees and a text amendment, and then also some discussion about the implementation measures for the strategic plan. And then the other information I want to get out there is, Westmont First will meet again at the library on July 18th at 6:00 PM. That's a Monday night, so come out and join us there. I expect probably a longer meeting, just because we took June and pushed that agenda to July. So join us on July 18th at 6:00 PM at the Westmont Library. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Addington.
A couple things, thank you, Mayor. The first one is, yesterday morning, economic development met. We had a very good meeting. We had two new presentations at that meeting. The first one was a young lady who wants to come into our downtown and open up a, what she calls, a massage therapy business. It's going to be very much medically related, does a lot of work with autistic kids and folks, and so I think that's going to be very exciting, and we'll be hearing more from her in a short time. And the other is Village Automotive, over on West Naperville Road, is talking about an expansion of that business. So again, two very positive things. Also, at economic development, we began talking about those elements of the strategic plan that kind of involve economic development, and we had a very, very good discussion of things that the economic development may feel should be part of the strategic plan, and that'll just be an ongoing process we'll be talking about again at our next meeting, which will be August 3rd. And we now have a new restaurant opened, for those who are not aware. It's called Bee, the letter B. It's at the Hilton. It's a casual experience designed to give people a place to celebrate, and they feature local, fresh, and seasonal food and drink. And so that is now open. So as Hilton continues with its remodeling and plans, they now have the restaurant reopened, so that's another positive, and another place to go in town. So that's taken care of. And then strategic plan, our next meeting is next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
At 9:00, at 10:30, excuse me.
10 o'clock, I believe.
10 o'clock here in the room behind me, so anybody who would like to come and see what's going on, please, please attend. But that's an ongoing process of the Implementation Committee, and I think, as I mentioned last meeting in the memo I passed out, there's 81 individual-specific items that the Strategic Committee put together, and we're addressing the top 20 right now, as far as those that were considered top priority by the committee. So we keep moving forward, and it's a process, and it's a good process. And that's it? That's all I have, sir?
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I do have one, I'm sorry. Other than, for the next three days, please stop by the Lions booth. We have tons of carbs for you, you know, grilled cheese, potatoes, grilled, and corn. So I don't want to miss the advertisement for the Lions Club booth. I will get voted out if I.
And reasonably priced.
And reasonably priced, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of items. The first one is the Administration Committee meeting. The next one would be July 21st, that's two weeks from right now. On the agenda, we'll be talking about social media and communications updating you, and also the Sister City Program presentation will be held. Another item to let you know is, if I could put this up.
Nice.
This is the flyer for the Taste of Westmont that's happening this weekend, right downtown, and we have, obviously, our wonderful sponsors, we have rides, we have food, we have a lot of entertainment, a lot of activity for the kids. We have specials for the carnival ride, so make sure everyone comes out and stop and say hello to all our sponsors. If you want to volunteer, we still have lots of openings. If you call the Westmont Special Events number, 630-829-9378, we can send you a link to our sign-up sheet, and we'll get you involved in volunteering with the special events, doing the taste, or you can even volunteer for cruise nights. So please make it a point. Our cruise nights are still running for the rest of the summer. We're the, through the whole month of July and August on Thursday night, so come out and join us for all of the activities. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And if the Special Events Corporation is made up of all volunteers, and I think we've said this over and over, but there's so many people hours involved, and of course, you're on that committee and you're part of that, so we thank them for everything they do, not only on Thursday night, but for what we're going to have this weekend with the Taste.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just to piggyback, I think, everyone's sentiments, I saw the volunteers working yesterday already, and throughout, and just amazing, in the heat today, guys were there supervising tents and so forth. So again, a big thanks to the volunteers. That's really what makes it happen. I just have a couple things. Our next Public Works Committee is going to be next Thursday, and that's going to be 4:30 at the Water Department. So we encourage the public to attend. I know that Mike's going to have the possibilities for the brick options for the alleys, so that'll be exciting to see. And then, the Environmental Improvement Commission is working with, a joint effort with Clarendon Hills, and they are continuing to work on the Richmond Educational Garden Project, and we'll have some updates soon. Like a lot of the committees, we're kind of taking some time off in the summer. There's been some mistakes, so. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, first item on the agenda is a public hearing on fiscal year 2016, 2017 appropriation ordinance, and at this point, I will call that public hearing to order and ask Finance Director Parker to provide some additional information.
So that the public and the board is aware, this is a two-step process tonight. We have the public hearing at the beginning of this meeting, and then further on, we have the option for the board to decide to approve the appropriations ordinance. The appropriations ordinance is the official limit on spending, which we can do as a village. As you'll recall, we've already gone through the budget process. The budget remains our plan and the way we intend to implement and reform our spending. The appropriations ordinance is the maximum that we can spend, if, for example, if we get more revenue than we initially planned in the budget, or if we have some additional expenses that we didn't intend, that we didn't know about when we created the budget. So this is the maximum amount that we can spend. It's also the amount that we will use in December when we go to levy our property taxes for the following year. We'll use this appropriations ordinance as our base. At this point, it's here to have the public discuss this, or ask any questions. We also have our Library Director, Julia Cohen, here, in case any members of the public have any questions for her.
And again, I think we've been pretty consistent and thorough with providing information as this process has moved forward. So I think we've answered numerous questions over the past several months, but this is an opportunity, anybody here tonight would like to ask any thing, and then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on. It's closed. We'll move on to items removed from the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like to be removed? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to read the consent agenda, please.
This evening, on the consent agenda, the first item is Village Board Minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held June 23rd, 2016. 2016. Next is Finance Ordinance Number Five, in the amount of $1,709,812.20. And seeing as how last time we changed the limit, threshold limit for purchase orders, there are no purchase orders on the consent agenda this evening. Next item is the May financial report. Board to consider a motion to accept the financial report submitted for the month of May 2016. Next, WSEC, or Westmont Special Events Corporation, FY 2016-17 Hotel Motel Grant. Board to consider a motion awarding a hotel motel grant in the amount of $10,000 to the Westmont Special Events Corp. You did discuss this at the May Finance Committee meeting. This is the follow-up to that. Next item is also Hotel Motel Grant for Westmont Park District. Board to consider a motion awarding a Hotel Motel Grant in the amount of $5,000 to the Westmont Park District to assist with the holidays and additional community events that occurred during the year as well. This was also discussed at that May meeting, and you previously approved a $2,500 reimbursement. I just wanted to point out that that $2,500 is included in this $5,000, so it's not in addition to. And that concludes the consent agenda, so.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Parker.
Motion made and second to approve as read. On the question.
Oh, that's a fine.
On the question, $2.
$2.
We'll wait for Trustee Addington. Seeing, seeing no questions, I'd ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Little. Yes. Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Moving on. We do not have any unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. Fiscal year 2016-17 appropriation. Board to consider an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2016, 2017 appropriation ordinance. And again, Finance Director Parker.
Right. The only thing I'll add to my previous comments is just to let you know the amounts. So, the total amount in the appropriations ordinance is the same as was presented in the draft, which was available to the public, unless there's any additional changes at this point. The amount we're approving for a total appropriation is $71,857,000 with 3,000, sorry, with $3,000,000 and $13,000 of that being for the library.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Addington.
Motion made, is second to approve the appropriation ordinance. On the question. Anybody, seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little. Yes. Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Motion passes.
One should ask the library a question since she came on.
Do you want to say anything? Well, I caught you. New business B, Jay Fleming's Absolutely Delicious Temporary Tent. Board to consider ordinance revoking portions of the ordinance number 10-48 concerning temporary approval as new regulations govern this tent use. Chief Weiss.
Thanks, Mayor. Ordinance number 10-48 granted approval to Jay Fleming's to erect a temporary tent at 18 North Cass Avenue each year from April through October. The board has since enacted temporary tent regulations regarding annual permits and inspections. As a result of the new regulation, the board should revoke a portion of the prior temporary tent approval as the new regulations govern this use. I have Assistant Director Tom Schultz here, if there's any questions from the board members. We reviewed this at Public Safety a few weeks back.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Second, Little.
The, the original ordinance granted kind of automatic annual approvals to Jay Fleming's to erect their tent. Now, they have to come in annually, submit a permit, be subject to an inspection, and comply with the tent regulations. But there are some other conditions in the ordinance that aren't necessarily tent safety regulations, but have to do with lighting, that have to be on a hard surface, surface of alcohol, things like that. Those portions of that previous ordinance will remain in effect and are in the ordinance that I emailed out today to you.
Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Little. Yes. Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, Electric Supply Agreement. Board to consider an ordinance approving an electric supply agreement with consta-
Constellation.
I'm misreading. For the purpose of, for electricity for municipal purposes. Manager May.
We currently have, this is a electrical supplier, electrical aggregation agreement. It is not the community aggregation that we used to do. This is for our own municipal buildings and any of our facilities, street lighting and the energy that we consume. Our contract will expire this December, and it is with constellation. The, what we're asking for here is permission to renew that contract for just one year for two purposes. We talked about this a little bit at Public Works Committee, too, but one, that it'll bring our termination date in line with the park districts, and then it'll give us an opportunity to aggregate even further when that one's renewed. And the pricing changes day to day, so instead of approving a, an agreement here, you're authorizing me to execute it on the day that our consultant, you know, determines is an opportune time to, you know, lock in those rates. So, that is our, my request.
I have a motion.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion's been made and second to approve as presented. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little. Yes. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Moving on. New business D, Amendments to the Fire Code. Board to consider an ordinance approving local amendments to the Fire Code regarding above-ground storage tanks for cooking oil. Chief Weiss.
Thanks, Mayor. Fire Department is recommending local amendments to the Fire Code, Section 42-189 of the Code Ordinance regarding above-ground storage tanks. The proposed amendments will allow storage tanks for cooking oil based upon new product development in this area. And I'd like to have Assistant Director Tom Schultz come up and supply some additional information.
Good evening. With these, the industry now has a new product which eliminates the storage tanks for waste oil. So, it's, it takes away that unsightly garbage can kind of in your packets. We have given you different pictures of what's really out there for that. These are considered a pressure vessel, and they are basically governed by flammable liquids through the Office of Safe Fire Marshal's office, and they will be the ones that will test and certify them like gas station underground tanks, which they are to do. Cooking oil is a Class III flammable liquid, where gasoline, if you want to compare, is a Class I. So, it's not as volatile as an above-ground fuel tank for gasoline or fuel oil. And then, like I said, they do, the Fire Marshal Office will inspect and certify as compliant initially, and then buy annually for the tanks.
We just, you know, the reason we're bringing this forward, because we have our first one in town over at Grill 89. And that's where, when we went to do our inspection, we found that they had installed this. And actually, to the surprise of the Fire Marshal, they have not seen it before. And then, Director Kaufman had done some research on it to find out there were over 200 of them in the state of Illinois, which the Fire Marshal then was surprised that they hadn't went out and inspected any of them. So, again, it's a good product. It's a safe, safe container, and I guess we can say we're, got the first in the state to been inspected by the Fire Marshal.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve those local amendments to the Fire Code?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Parker.
Motion made and second, and on the question. Trustee Barrett.
So, on our existing businesses, would, will they be grandfathered in, or will they be forced to get the new system, or?
No. There'd be, they won't, whatever they have right now is still okay, but if they make a change, they're going to have to make a change.
Like any, like any other ordinance. Okay. Thank you.
Chief, are these tanks located outside the premises, like a fuel tank is?
Yes.
Are there any recommendations or prohibitions against enclosing them with, you know, a masonry wall or a privacy fence?
The only issue would be access. The fuel oil is delivered by truck and filled, the partial half of the tank would be fresh oil, and the other half is used oil. There's actually piping that goes from the fryers in, into the restaurant, and it circulates so they can take away the dirty oil and put in fresh oil. So, there would just have to be that access. I'm not sure on what area that a truck would need for that, but that's a research we can do. But I'm sure that privacy fence or block, concrete block or something like that.
The Village does it for the rollout garbage containers for commercial developments, and might want to consider that for zoning for, for these tanks if aesthetics are a concern at all. I don't know if it would be or not.
And your packet is a picture of Grill 89s, and we got it here on the, we can bring that up, Glenn. The, does show that there is a privacy fence behind it, and it does come down past Canale there a little, but it doesn't enclose it altogether because they had to get in there to drain this.
They happen to have one there, but as far as requiring it for anybody who's going to utilize this, it's a good question, but it's a zoning code addition, right? It would be a follow-up to this.
Yeah. Jill's sitting here, I figured I'd.
Certainly looks better than the dumpster.
Right. I assume that there's not as much smell as like with the other contained.
It's all contained, there is no smell.
Yeah, right. That's the biggest thing that I noticed next to the restaurants.
Additional comments or questions?
So, I guess just one thing.
Go ahead.
One follow-up is, what is the routine maintenance on a, on a regular? If you had an existing one now, do they keep that same one, or do they change those out periodically, or?
Oil in a fryer.
As far as in, like these existing bins or gallons, what, everyone has besides Grill 89 today.
Those are not regulated. I know that they dump them and put the greasy one back that they dump. How long they keep doing that, I'm, it's not regulated that I know of, especially not by the Fire Department, where at least this, it would be maintained and watched over.
So, in theory, if a restaurant needed a new one that they had existing, they couldn't replace that? They would have to go to this system, then?
No. They could, they could replace it with a new one. I don't know how often that they do replace an old dumpster with a new one, but we're not mandating that if they have the dumpster system that they have to go with this. This is just another option for restaurants to go to.
And I think it's like Waste Management kind of, I think, does that, or a company comes around, it's kind of like Waste Management, where they come empty your garbage and put the container back down. The same company comes by, empties that used oil, and then leaves the same container there.
I think that's where the mess comes in.
Yeah.
When they pick it up. I think that it is where it is.
Any additional comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little. Yes. Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Moving on. New business E, Amendments to the International Building Code. Board to consider an ordinance approving amendments to the 2012 International Building Code regarding standpipe systems. Chief Weiss.
Thanks, Mayor. The Fire Department is recommending amendments to the 2012 International Building Code regarding standpipe systems. The proposed amendments will aid with fire suppression safety for buildings. Attached memo describes the proposed amendments, which you should have in front of you. The reason that we are bringing this, you know, forward is it's a language thing that we want to change. Existing code sets a threshold requiring standpipes when the highest floor level is 30 feet or above. This is an issue, and that many three-story buildings can forego standpipes by staying underneath 30 feet. Example of this is like the Fire Department representative during a code hearing agreed to the provision, you know, in the previous or the current code. Fighting a fire on a third-floor building without standpipe is incredibly difficult. This issue came to light with the new assistant living building being built on 63rd Street. We were able to get standpipes installed without significant increase in cost by allowing standpipe pressure requirements from the 2003 code. Main objective is require standpipes in three-story or higher new construction buildings.
I have a motion.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Addington.
Motion made and second to approve. On the question.
The question, what, I assume that the standpipe is, keeps, you guys have water pressure up there? Is that, is that what it is?
Yeah. You know, when you get to 30 feet or higher, third floor up, we have standpipe holes, standpipe connections, things that we connect to the standpipe to get the water up to that level. We have, need additional pressure. We also had to put a fire pump in to help with the current sprinklers or the stand, or that supply those standpipes. We then substitute supplying those standpipes by connecting to the outside with double hoses. The issue came with the assistant living is they want to get a, get around putting the money into a fire pump and to not put standpipes in by only putting 27 feet instead of 30. And so, we were able to negotiate with them and sit with them.
Broken again.
And, and be able to agree for them to put standpipes in, too, but we adjusted the pressures to be able to work with them to get it in there because, because it's a assistant living that really needed in there. But this came to light, so we don't want this to happen again, so that's why we bring them in.
They're already in construction, so it'll just be them working with us at that point?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little. Yes. Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business F, Employee Holiday Schedule. Board to consider an ordinance update Section 62-95-Holidays of the Municipal Code to include Martin Luther King Jr. Day to the holiday list. And Manager May.
Mayor, it's as simple as that. There's no further description to that, other than we talked about it at a previous committee meeting. It's just modifying the personnel code to add that as one of the personal holidays, being a federal holiday, to the list. I will, I guess I will add, the, not only is adding the holiday, but we're fine tweaking the language in that section to better differentiate the difference between bargaining units and, and non-bargaining and other staff. So, substantively, it's the same. It's just a clarification opportunity.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Addington.
Motion made and second. On the question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little. Yes. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Parker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to miscellaneous. Anything else that he has to add tonight, other than, thank goodness you caught yourself, Jim? Before you fell? Was that because your phone was on?
No, no, that was a separate issue.
His phone rang?
All right.
I didn't even hear it.
And we do not.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
And seeing that we do not have an executive session, I will, this time, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second, Nero.